I'll call the meeting to order. Please, I mean for the pledge of allegiance.
Praise the city to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion by Councilmember Henry. I will second, and a second by Councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, community comment, looks like we do not have any members of the community here tonight, so let's move on. There are no presentations or reports. For the public hearings, we have the certification of delinquent utilities. So I will open the public hearing and then give the floor to Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If you remember, back in the end of last year, we had gone from the model of turning water off to actually certifying delinquent utilities. So we continued that process in the calendar year of 2021. And in addition to that, what we're also considering tonight is one city service bill for some costs provided in response to a public nuisance abatement. And that had to do with some lawn mowing that had occurred. Throughout the year, city staff had continued to work to collect these outstanding bills. However, they still remain, these certain ones still remained unpaid. And I want to call to your attention that Brenda Efta does a great job with this. She spends a lot of time following up each month with those delinquent bills. So if you get a chance to see her and thank her for all of her work with that. But that being said, we did follow the legal process where we are having a public hearing. Those individuals that were affected by this did receive information so that they know that this public hearing is occurring. They know all of the details of what the certification amount is going to be. And if this certification rule is adopted by the city council tonight, following this public hearing, these proposed amounts would be certified to the Carver County Auditor prior to their deadline, which is November 30th. As previously discussed, account holders can still take advantage of that Minnesota Water Assistance Program even after we certify these to Carver County. I've talked to the Carver County Auditor, and we do have a process in place. So if somebody were to come and qualify for this assistance, they would still be able to do it even though it's been certified. So we will be able to continue to work through that with them. So these assessments would be certified for payment with the 2022 property taxes. The rate of interest is 5% for one year, in addition to the 25 administrative charge for each utility account, which is what the fee is for this year for 2021. The resolution that is in your packet, depending upon when you looked at it, I did update it this afternoon, we did receive one additional payment today. Today was the last day that they had an opportunity to pay that off before we will certify that. So the total number of delinquent accounts is 14 instead of 15. And then we have the one delinquent account for the city services cost bill. So I would open it up to any questions, and then after we close the public hearing, I would be looking at an adoption of the resolution to allow us to certify these delinquent accounts to Carver County.
All right, with that, are there any public comments? Anyone providing comments should come up to the microphone and state their name and address for the record. After all, public comments are received. If any, the public hearing will be closed. No future comments on this issue will be received at this meeting. Right, being that there's no one here, I think we can entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Got a motion by Councilmember Henry? And I'll make the second. I wasn't trying to do that.
No, no, I know. We'll have to really mix it up tonight here.
Okay, I'll do the second to close the public hearing. So we've got a motion by Councilmember Henry and a second by Mayor Johnson. Those in favor say aye, or any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right, any additional comments or questions from the council?
I have.
Go ahead.
I have one. So for the folks on here who are delinquent, so we keep talking about the assistance program. Have they been notified of the assistance program?
What we did is we had put information in the newsletter, and then sporadically, we put it out on the website and social media. And we did have a few calls, and they were referred to the CAP Agency, who will screen them for eligibility. And then, once they are approved, then the city would be contacted by the CAP Agency, so.
I wonder if, I mean, they've gone delinquent here, so no one knows what their circumstances are, but I wonder, since we have this captured list here, if it's worth sending out a letter in the mail saying, hey, this program is available, check it out. It's, I don't think it can hurt anything.
Can we do something like that? Okay.
If you wanted to send it, I mean, at this point, it's probably too late.
Well, she said that even after certifying, they can still apply for this.
Right, no, I just mean it's too late to let them know before it gets certified, but they could still take advantage of it because they'll have time for a few months, right?
Right, actually, Carver County said, you know, all throughout, depending upon if there's money left with the program, yes, Carver County will continue to work with us, not only this year, but into next year, so.
Yeah, I think it would be worth it then sending something out, just saying that it's available. Thank you.
We can do that. We'll actually follow up with information that it's been certified, and then we can include information if they want to pursue that as well.
Perfect.
I'm just thinking back, this is the most I've seen on this delinquency report ever.
Right, and if you remember, we used to turn water off, so then people needed to bring their account current, or their water would be turned off. And then that process was changed a year ago. So you are correct, we used to have one to three, very, very few, so because the process has changed, yes, we do. And actually, when I mentioned Brenda Efta, she has about 80 to 100 delinquent accounts each month. And then, once we send the letter out and remind people, and they will contact us, and then, most of them get paid. But then again, when we get to this time of the year, we have the opportunity, once a year, to certify these, so that's the process that we are following. We are correct, there are quite a few more when we're following this process.
That's all I had. Thank you.
I'm just wondering, can you kind of talk me through the process? So I haven't paid my water bill for three months. Are there phone calls that are made? How do you, do you reach out and try to work with these folks?
They actually get a letter each month, even when they're one month late, two months, three months, and then it goes all the way until this time of the year. And we can only certify an account if it's three months or more, or more than three months delinquent. So if somebody didn't pay their last water bill, they're not eligible, or we wouldn't certify it yet at this point, so.
So it's all just a mail process? You never pick up the phone and say, hey, hey Courtney, you haven't paid your water bill, like that's a thing, do you need to, you know?
Yeah, we haven't really done that. We put in the letter how to contact us if they have questions about anything, but we have not reached out via phone call.
Okay. Okay, that was my only question, Glenn. I just paid my other one and asked her for me, so, thank you. All right, with that, unless we have any other questions or discussion, there's a resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 147-21 that accepts and certifies the assessment role for delinquent utility bills and city service bills for costs provided in response to the public nuisance abatements.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Mock and a second by Councilmember Henry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right, moving on to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilmember Henry?
I will second.
And a second by Councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Moving right along, the business item municipal state aid system. Mr. Schmidt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening, Erin.
Good evening. Tonight, I have an exciting topic to talk about, the municipal state aid street system. A very big step in the city of Carver. Now that we've surpassed 5,000 people, we have the ability to become a municipal state aid city, or what we're going to be referring to going forward as an MSA city in our presentation tonight. So I have a slideshow, which I don't know why it isn't showing up. Let's see. There we go. Okay, so tonight's, the goal for tonight is to establish our initial MSA system. So ultimately, what would be requested is adopting a resolution tonight, which is going to establish the streets that are going to be part of our initial system. So what we're going to do tonight, I'm going to go through, you know, what is this MSA program in general, how does it function? We're going to then step into how we set up the city of Carver's system to maximize the amount of dollars that we will be receiving from state aid. And then, lastly, we'll take a look at the ongoing program maintenance, you know, what things do we have to do on a yearly basis going forward, and, you know, those next steps, so. An overview of the program, the municipal state aid street program provides funding to help cities pay for their street maintenance and construction projects. It's administered by MINDOT, by the State Aid for Local Transportation Division of MINDOT. And it's eligible for all cities that are over 5,000 people. And as of 21, just for reference, there's 148 MSA cities with about 3,800 of miles of state aid streets. And this year, there is the city of Carver, obviously, and I believe there's one other city that's, that's going to be joining in 2022, so. The funding itself comes from the Highway Users Tax Distribution Fund, so your gas tax, your TAB fees, your motor vehicle sales tax, that all is the revenue stream that dumps money into this fund. And this bucket of funds is then allocated to the state, county state aid system, and the municipal state aid street system. So for some perspective, about 9% of this, of the funding is going to the MSA street system, so the local, the city, the portion of it. And in 2020, that added up to be about $210 million, so it's a pretty big chunk of money that's, that's going to this overall effort in the state. MSA allocations given to a city are divided up given two variables. The first is population, so obviously, the bigger city you are, the more you'll get from just a purely population perspective. And then the second one is based on the system miles you have within your city. So some streets, or some cities have, you know, a lot more miles than others, even if they're, you know, big or small. So there's two key variables that go into this overall equation that determines how much money each city gets. So here's an overview map of just all the cities that are in the program. There is 64 cities in greater Minnesota, another 84 in the metro area, so that's the 148 cities. So the process to become an MSA city, the ones that have the checkmark next to them are things that we've already done. So obviously, the first thing is to receive your, your population estimate from the Met Council, which we have received here this summer, so I believe in August, we received our, our number. Next, we were, we notified the state aid engineer, the district state aid engineer, saying that, you know, we're over 5,000, our intentions are to become an MSA city, so that's been completed. Since then, we've met with state aid staff, we've met with them, Brent was at the kickoff meeting as well, just kind of talked through things with them. And we've worked up this draft certification of how much mileage we're eligible for in our city. And since then, we've submitted that to state aid, along with this proposed map of the routes that we'd wanted to apply for state aid funding on. And that has been preliminary approved from state aid, so what I'm presenting tonight has already, you know, received the initial checkmark that, yes, this will be the system that will be eligible, given the council resolution. So we're, we're getting to the point now where there's the one step needed from a resolution from the council, and then we'll submit that final resolution back to state aid. And what we're ultimately looking for is the formal designation from the Commissioner of Transportation. So we'll get a formal letter from the Commissioner saying, the city of Carver is a state aid city, and these are the routes that are hereby municipal state aid. So that's all going to come down here in the last month of the year. So after, after this is considered, and if it's approved tonight, then we'll go through the rest of the process here before December 31st. So the designation process itself for, for the street selections, so up to 20% of our total mileage of streets within the city, our total local mileage, that's the amount that can be designated as municipal state aid. I'll get into that a little bit more here on the next slide. The selection of these streets is determined by the city, but it's subject to MINDOT approval, like I said. They've already given the, the seal of approval that these streets meet the characteristics of what a municipal state aid street has to be. And those are, it has to generally carry a heavier traffic volume. You're not looking at like your purely, you know, residential streets as a municipal state aid street. It has to, you know, carry more traffic to and from another MSA street or something higher, like something going out to Jonathan Carver Parkway, or up to Chaska Boulevard, that, that type of stuff. Think about it as it moves traffic from one, one place to another. All MSA routes have to begin and end at an MSA or higher jurisdiction. So a stub street now is not eligible. For example, you know, obviously, someday Monroe Drive is going to be a very big street in our system, but since it's just stubbed to nowhere right now, it's not eligible because it doesn't go anywhere yet. And then the last piece of it is, it has to be within the city limits. So here's the certification of mileage that I alluded to. So the city of Carver has 25.92 miles of local roads right now. So 20% of that equates to 5.18 miles. That's the maximum amount of mileage that we can claim as an MSA system right now in the city of Carver. So obviously, the goal is to maximize the amount of mileage we want to, to request and get as close to 5.18 as possible. So with all that being said, we've taken a look at, you know, all the streets that would meet this requirement, and we've come up with a system that gets us 5.17 miles. So we're 1/100 of a mile short of using every single foot of eligible length that we can. So in general, this is all, it's in your packet, I listed it all out, it's in the resolution as well, but it includes Mount Hope Road, Sixth Street, Fourth Street, Broadway from Fourth to Sixth, Curche Hill Drive and High Street that connects from Sixth to Fourth, segments of Ironwood Drive, Hartwell Drive, segments of White Pine Way, Lywood Parkway, Main Street East to Oak Street, Oak Street up to Fifth, and Fifth Street over to Mount Hope Road. So in general, that is the proposed system, and this is kind of a zoom in of that, so you can kind of see how contiguous this is and how it relates to connecting to MSA or higher streets.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but it's, can you go back to the slide? I have one question, so as long as this map is up. None of the roads in the Bluffs qualified, even though they go from a county state aid to a county state aid? Harbor Bluffs Parkway wasn't eligible?
So we did look at that. Harbor Bluffs Parkway is something that we were thinking, yeah, it, you could maybe do it. The thing is with, when you make something an MSA route, it has to meet all the state aid standards too, so if you ever did a project on it, you'd have to bring it up to state aid standards, which gets into parking and all that kind of stuff. So that's one big thing. The second thing is, it's about two miles long, so it eats up a lot of our available mileage. So we thought the needs would be better suited on some of these other streets in the near term. Plus, the other streets carry a little more traffic too, so we, the higher ADT results in more money.
Okay, and Brent, you're comfortable with that? Okay, thank you.
So that's, yep, and I should point out too that this is your initial system. We'll, we'll get into this, but we can change this annually based on the, the needs, how much we've grown. So the, the goal for right now is to get your system set up and get as close to your 5.18 as you can for this first year. So that's, just think of it in those terms for tonight, as much as possible.
Sorry, do you mind if we just jump in with questions?
Sure.
So you got really close to that 5.18 with 5.17. The idea is to get as close as possible, because otherwise, we're leaving money on the table?
Correct, exactly.
And who picked these routes? The people who made it look like a state?
No, so the, that's a good point. So we, this is, the letter that's in the packet is basically that preapproval letter. So we've, we went, you know, at staff level, and we went back and forth, we looked at, you know, several different routes and how it all adds up. And then, once we were comfortable with it at a staff level, we submitted it to state aid, because we wanted to make sure that they were comfortable with it before we presented it to the council, because I, I wouldn't want to present a route that wouldn't work. So state aid's comfortable with everything we've presented, and, yeah, so as long as the council's happy with, with the system, then we're good to go, so. So here's the annual maintenance and program management going forward. So let's first touch on the items on the left, so these are the required items that have to happen. So obviously, the first ones, create the new MSA city, that's, happens one time. And then, on an annual basis, there's a few things we need to do in the spring, one of which is that certification of mileage. So every year, like as Carver grows, we have more miles of streets, right? So like when Timber Creek Development comes in, and those are certified miles that are, you know, recorded, Platts, recorded, all that stuff, that's more mileage is that we can do our 20% again, so we'll get more, you know, we have more options then. So we do that every January, and then after the mileage is certified, so state aid reviews that and says, yes, this is all new mileage that applies. There's some mapping updates that happen in February. And then, in March, the state uses a program, it's called a needs application, and it's all entered into like a digital program where they track all this, that happens in March then. And then the last thing that has to happen, either every two or four years, is we need to do traffic counts on the roads. As I mentioned, the average daily traffic on the road dictates, that goes into the equation for how much you get for your routes. So the higher volume, the more money you get essentially. So we'll decide, you know, every two or four years, you have the flexibility to do those, basically the traffic counting. And we decide that, like if a road is continuing to expand and sees more volume, you might do it every two years, but if it's a road that's staying like fairly stagnant, probably just do counts every four years on those, so. That's something we'll get into in the future, it's nothing we need to worry about tonight, so. And then the, the optional or as-needed items I'm seeing on the right hand of the page here are, so your system revisions, that's if you actually want to add another road to your map, or take one of the roads off of your system map. So that happens as needed, and that's passed via council resolution as well. So that's a formal step that whenever a road gets added or taken off, we'll be back at council, and we'll do it formally that way. A few other things that happen at the, at the state level, so they have meetings twice a year, there's a spring meeting and a fall meeting, basically gives an update about the program, what's, you know, if there's any changes of how it's managing things, they just basically update all the cities that are involved in the program. And then what we're obviously looking forward to do with the funding is put it to work, right? So ultimately, we'll be looking to, to do a state aid project. You know, we've already identified in the pavement management plan, you know, when we do Fourth Street, when we do Mount Hope Road, we are program, programming to use state aid funds to help build those projects. So that's the ultimate goal here. And with that comes the funding reimbursement request. So that's in the form of a state aid pay request. So basically, the city, when it, once it has money into this, into the project, it requests that, that funding. So you do pay requests to the state essentially. And then there's one other piece that's called advanced encumbrance requests. So what that is, if for some reason you want to do a project, and you think your fund balance is going to go negative for a period of time until it can build it back up again, you can actually request that the state allow you to let your fund balance go to negative. And it's not always a guarantee that, that it'll happen, they might say no, but they look at their overall health of the, the fund as a whole, you know, the overall fund, and they'll make a determination if they'll allow you to do that. So that might help you, for example, complete a $750,000 project when you might only have $500,000 in the, in your account right now. So some next steps, so we're here tonight, obviously, the council resolution is the important step for tonight. After, after that's completed, we'll input the routes into the needs application program, and then receive the final commissioner's order by the end of the year. So if all that aligns, we can look to receive our first round of funding by February of 2022 is the, is what I've heard from state aid, so. And then, obviously, next steps ongoing, like I mentioned, just system revisions, I'm sure that we'll be looking at that quite a bit, because Carver is such a growing city that we're going to want to keep our mileage maximized, so we'll be, we'll be talking, you know, probably once a year and looking what routes we want to add. And then, the, the last piece is evaluating a potential turnback with, with the county. That's something that is directly benefiting to the city in that certification of mileage. That doesn't count against your 20%. So if, for example, we would ever entertain a turnback on County Route 40, for example, say that's two miles long, I don't know what the exact number is, just say it's two miles, that's two miles you get, that's just, no, 20% of that, it's just two miles. So it's actually pretty nice in that respect. So that's all something that we can talk about in the future, and, but for tonight, it's, it's getting the system set up, so. Any questions?
Questions?
Yes, this is annual money, right? And we can change the streets annually?
Yeah, whenever we want, you can request a system revision whenever you want, it just has to get, it has to go through council and get passed by a resolution.
Okay, and then 40 is not a part of it, that will just be added to miles, correct?
Yeah, 40 is not part of any of, anything we have to date. That's just something, I wanted to mention that it would apply in the future if it's something that the council would like to consider, so.
And we're off the subject, but we're, we're in communication right now with the county with that, correct? That's my question.
Do we know how much money this means from the state at this point?
So when we were looking at the pavement management plan, we had programmed 250,000 in the.
A year.
Yeah, on an annual basis in our, in our cash flow projections for the state aid. So hopefully, I'm hoping we're conservative, then we can surpass that, but that's what we're, you know, tentatively planning on right now.
We won't know until February then for.
I don't know if I'll know before, I might know a little bit before, but let's wait and see. Yep.
Is this guaranteed money from the state? We've talked before about some other revenue streams from the state that we were worried might get cut from the budget. Is this a more sure thing, understanding that nothing's? Yeah.
I mean, I think it's a pretty healthy fund, I haven't heard of it going away. Brent might be able to speak to it a little bit more, but.
I'm not familiar with any cuts to state aid or state aid funding related to streets. I don't, Dave, have you heard?
I'm not, and I know it comes from the, like the taxes we pay when we get our registration of our vehicles every year. So I mean, that money, that revenue stream is pretty consistent in the state, everyone has cars, and a lot of people pay a lot of money for those registrations. So I think that is a pretty healthy fund, I guess I can't speak on behalf of the state in terms of what they might want to do with that money. that money, but I know it does go toward the state aid fund. So I think you're pretty, you can be pretty, um, I, I'm positive that you're likely to get it. You know.
There's the-
Being positive without being like-
Take it for what it's worth, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then my only other question was, um, of the selection of some of the streets, and I understand that this took some amazing arithmetic to get to, within one one-hundredth of a mile. Um, but is the idea not to use kind of some older streets and that are more in need of maintenance generally?
Is that the idea?
Is that the idea?
Well, obviously, you'd like to use the streets that you might want to do a project on, right? So like we identified, you know, Fourth and Mount Hope being two in the five-year CIP that, um, we're going to use the money on, so.
Okay, yeah, my only, where I'm going with that is, is we just did, so for Kerchie and High Street, we just did the mill and over there on those like last year.
Yep.
And I get it that those can come off and that those probably gave us the, you know, point three-four of a mile to get us even further on in the plan, but I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't wasted and that wasn't a better use for a street that wasn't redone just last year.
Mm-hmm. No, it's a really good point, Mary. And, and what I like to refer to those streets are is like flex streets. Um, so they're flexible segments that you do get, um, obviously creative. They, they meet the, the need for, for what it needs to be, but, um, there's nothing to say that, you know, next year, we couldn't switch it around, so.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, like if we get another mile next year and we have a street that-
Yep, for sure.
Is needs that point three-four to get to that mile.
Mm-hmm.
Um, thank you.
Just to follow up on that, Mary, ultimately, we're, if you look back to our pavement management plan, we're building to do MSA projects on Fourth Street West and Mount Hope Road. And so what you see in the green is really a, a co- a collective revenue stream to fund those two projects. And so as our pavement management plan evolves, you'll see this plan evolve to fund additional MSA projects going forward.
Okay.
And then, uh, this one little piece, if you notice on kind of the top end or Mount Hope Road kind of, um, ends at the city limits, there's a little, I think it's like a tenth of, or one-tenth of one-tenth of a mile, um, that's actually in the city of Chaska that leads to Kasah sixty-one or Chaska Boulevard. Uh, we've met with Chaska a number of times, we're facilitating a process with them where they're going to include that little stub of Mount Hope Road, uh, south of Chaska Boulevard, uh, in their MSA system. But you might hear some coordination efforts either at the Chaska City Council meeting where they'd have to adopt a resolution, um, or there might be something that comes back to us. But just to let you know that that's something that's in the works in order for us to be able to get Mount Hope Road into the system so it dives into another, um, or dives into that, uh, county road.
What year did we have Mount Hope planned again?
I just looked at that before the meeting. It was, I keep this in my back pocket all the time.
Even on vacation.
Yeah. Mount Hope Road is planned for, uh, twenty-twenty-six and Fourth Street was planned for twenty-twenty-three.
Okay. So even understanding that we can go negative in this fund balance, the state aid is only going to provide a fraction of the revenue stream that we need for these improvement projects, correct?
Yeah.
No, we're planning to fully fund these streets through state aid dollars.
Okay. We think that like Mount Hope, it's only going to be a million dollars to redo?
Well, yeah, I'm not, I guess I'm not understanding the question.
So if we're anticipating getting two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year, it's going to take a while to, even if we can go negative in the fund balance, pay for a reconstruction on Mount Hope, which in my mind is going to be relatively pricey.
Yeah, Mount Hope is, uh, what do we have for our project? Seven, seven-hundred-and-forty-four. So it's a resurfacing, it's not a reconstruction.
Okay, okay. Making more worst case scenario with the numbers, so, okay. Thank you.
Hmm?
Anything else? All right, uh, then we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution, you know, forty-eight, eight dash twenty-one, establishing, um, municipal state aid streets in the city of Carver, Minnesota.
I'll make a second. So we have a motion by council member Henry and a second by mayor Johnson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. All right, motion passes. Um, on to communications, Mr. Merrick.
Um, one comment and then I have a question for the city attorney. Uh, the comment is related to this reminding folks, uh, the city is accepting applications for the Greg Ostride Community Service Award through Friday. So if you know of, uh, any one person or group that you think would be a, a good nominee or a good recipient of that award, uh, please feel free to email or call me or pass somebody or press, pass somebody's name along. And then the, uh, question is for the city attorney is related to the work session where the council had a question related to speed limits. And I know there's, or I understand there's been some changes over the last few years related to a city's ability to, our city's ability to, um, change speed limits on local roads. So Dave, if you could, uh, give the council an overview of that topic, please.
Sure, you put me on the spot, but, um, so it, it happened a couple of years ago and I think it was twenty-nineteen, the legislature changed, um, the statute that regulates speeds. And it provides cities, um, with the ability, as long as you're the road authorities, you can't do it on county roads, you can't do it on state highways, um, to reduce speed limits to, um, twenty-five or even twenty miles an hour and s- on certain residential roadways. Um, there are some, so first of all, they changed the definition of residential roadway, um, which I don't have off, off the top of my head, but, um, I believe you can change those speed limits without conducting any sort of traffic analysis. Prior to this, you had to apply to MINDOT, go through a process, there would be a traffic study done, and then you'd have to get approval before you could reduce, um, speed limits to twenty-five or, or lower. Now it's a little easier for cities to do that if you think you want to do that. Um, you can look at those types of changes. Um, but then there are other city streets that you can even go, um, lower than twenty-five, so you can go to twenty miles an hour in certain residential streets. I think the way the statute is written, and I can provide Brent, um, maybe a, a more substantive summary of all this that he can forward on to the council. Um, but I think not only do you have to have some sort of, um, I think it's called a, either an engineering or traffic analysis, uh, but I think the city is also then in charge of making sure that you communicate that effectively to people. Um, otherwise, folks won't know what the new speed limits are and there's an argument that they shouldn't be ticketed. Um, that's, there's a, a number of ways you can do that, but one of them is signage, of course, which is expensive, um, to, to roll out signs. So the, the long story short would be that cities do have more authority now on city streets to reduce speed limits, um, but you want to be a little careful about how you do that because it does come with it, um, some requirements in terms of communication. Um, and then we could look at the definitions and determine which streets you can certainly do it for, but, um, there might be certain streets, given the length or the fact that they're not zoned residential fully. In other words, maybe half the street's residential and half is mi- mixed use or there's business or commercials on, commercial uses on the other side, um, where that definition kind of gets thrown into question a little bit, so. Again, I think what probably makes sense, and I, I can try to answer questions if you have any, but I, I'm happy to send Brent after tonight's meeting a more thorough summary of the changes because I do know a lot of cities have been doing this. Um, in fact, we, I was, I heard, I overheard Aaron earlier tonight, um, talk about they were doing this in St. Louis Park and the reason I know that is because, um, my wife and I live in St. Louis Park or did until very recently. Um, and we, um, we know they went through the twenty mile per hour change there and it was actually a very long process, not to say you have to go through a long process, but they made it very public, um, you know, allowed for a lot of participation. It was a big deal because, um, you know, some of the streets they reduced the speed limits to and they're doing this all over the state, now all over the metro, I should say, different municipalities, but they are doing it on streets that, uh, people are used to driving thirty-five miles per hour on, um, and they're reducing it by ten miles per hour. So, um, something to think about. We can send you more information. I can try to answer more questions about it tonight, uh, but that's kind of the gist of the changes that happened a couple of years ago.
Is it just lowering the speed or can you raise it as well?
I'm pretty certain that the statute, uh, imposes maximum speed limits, especially for residential areas.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't think you can go above certain numbers. So that, that heavy foot, you're going to have to. No, I, I, I think it's, it's just, uh, reducing it below the statutory maximums.
Thank you. Is that for you? Ben, any updates?
Uh, planning commission meeting was canceled for this month. Um, other than that, I got nothing.
Great, Christie?
Uh, we had HPC last week. It's actually been every month we've had a meeting lately, so it's nice to see people are investing in their historic homes, but other than that, I don't have anything. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'd like to thank the Lions Club for their brunch. I couldn't make it that day, so it's, so, um, apparently it went really well and they had a great turnout, so I'm happy to hear that we're having some normal in-person events again, but want to thank them for all their hard work.
So that's on my list, um, as well. They did have a great turnout. We got there at eleven-thirty and it was crazy busy. I feel like we got the last two seats, so, um, really good and delicious as always, so. Um, let's see, in case you haven't heard, the school district's referendum passed. We had a community leaders meeting, um, last Friday, which is what the school district convenes, um, and the superintendent, Lisa Sales Adams, was very, very appreciative of all the help that the city helped, um, with in terms of getting the information out to voters. Um, since we last met, Brent and I met, met with commissioners Fahy and Uterman, um, along with David Henze to talk about affordable housing, um, in Carver County and city of Carver specifically. Like they were just trying to take our temperature to see where we're, we're at, um, and figure out, um, what we had planned and what we were looking at on the horizon. So it was good to be able to share the information about the workshop that we did with the, the CDA with them. Um, last Monday night, we had bias training, um, and the, the trainer, Sybil Dunlop, did a really, really good job. It was different from what I was expecting, but in a really good way, so, um, I thought it was good. Uh, last Thursday was the Veterans Day Program at Chaska Middle School West, and while they just did the outdoor flag raising ceremony, it was still good. In that same vein, I'm good to be doing some of the normal stuff again. Um, I think that is about it. Last Friday, we met with, um, Sheriff Camerud and, um, Mike Wollin, um, about the new policing detour model, which is something that, as we know, we're in a, a month into what will hopefully be a temporary model while they work on their staffing, um, stuff. So I think that's it for me, unless there's anything else, an entertainment question you have.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a motion by council member Henry and a second by council member Mark. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hold the same sign. Motion carries, good evening.